This conference will now be recorded.
It is for Gaslight Village. The request for reconsideration on a condition of approval.
Yeah, thank you.
Can he just?
Just for a minute. Thank you. You guys are high-tech. That's right. Good evening. My name is John Springer. I'm the attorney for Gaslight Village Cooperative. I'm joined by Mary Shepherd, the operations manager, and Dave DJ Jewell, who is also the vice president on the board. And I appreciate you hearing us and I appreciate LeAnn for setting this up as a motion for reconsideration of one of the items of, one of the conditional approval items. Because I was not that formal with her in my letter, so I appreciate that. We come in peace. I don't know if you've seen the letter that I wrote to LeAnn. I want to backtrack. Well, first of all, I want to underscore the fact that at this point, the cooperative wants that house out of there, bottom line, as much as you do. Trust me on that. But I want to back up on one thing I said in the letter because it's correct, but there's sort of an update, and that is, when I talked about the eviction process in that letter, I said there was a 60-day timeframe or 60-day notice period. That's true for a rules violation. What the co-op did in order to try to expedite this is they served the eviction notice on the people. Is this broadcast townwide? All right. I'm just going to refer to the people. Thank you. We serve an eviction notice on the people for non-payment of rent, which is an expedited process. We only have to give them 30 days' notice before we can file the landlord-tenant eviction process. That's the good news. The downside to that is it's easier for them to cure the eviction process or stop the eviction process by paying the rent. What we're going to do, and I just had a discussion with them tonight, we're also going to go ahead, so my letter said there was a 60-day notice period. Right now, it's a 30-day notice period, and we're halfway through it, pretty much. What we're also going to do, on my advice, is we're going to serve them a second eviction notice for a rules violation. That's our backup. And the rules violation is they violated the rules of the cooperative. That can serve as the basis of an eviction. The rules violation is going to be that the house is in violation of the town ordinance, and this board has said it needs to get out of there, and we have a cease and desist order, or not a cease and, but we have a removal order from the town CEO. The only way they can cure that one is to actually move the house. So we're going to get that clock ticking soon, too. So we're going to be doing dual tracks. And the second track, the longer track, in my opinion, the only way they can cure that problem is to move the house, which is what everybody wants. So that's what we're looking to do. However, the condition of approval said you can't get any other approvals from the town while you still have this house on the lot. And that's what we're looking for a little relief from. This came up, this whole issue came up because the people placed the home on the lot with, they had an agreement from the board to place the home on the lot. The agreement, in my opinion, says, or clearly implies, they have to do it in accordance with the town ordinance. And they didn't do that. Part of the problem is, quite frankly, on the co-op's plate. And we've had that discussion, and we understand that. But really, what the co-op did wrong, quote-unquote, here was they didn't do the oversight perhaps, or the safeguards weren't in place. It wasn't a deliberate attempt to do a end-around, and I think everybody understands that. We are talking now, we've had discussions, and I'm helping them come up with safeguards, how to avoid this situation coming up again. And I may actually be reaching out to LeAnn for an idea, or at least her thoughts about some ideas that I've had. But what we're going to try to do is put in that agreement that says in effect, okay, you can bring a home in on the lot, but before the home comes in, you have to show us that you were in compliance with the town ordinance and regulations. My guess is, and I'm just talking off the top of my head, the best way to do that is to say, "Show us your building permit." Because presumably, the town's not going to issue the building permit until it's in...
Plans.
The plans, yeah, until it's in accordance with what the town requires. But we haven't reached that point yet, but we're going to. And certainly, we have two people who are waiting patiently. And that's going to be as part of their deal, trust me on that. However, having said that, I mean, that's the background. Having said that, I'll get a little closer. I don't think, and taking one step back again, the town's correct in the sense that, yeah, you shouldn't be able to get zoning relief on your property for X if you're in violation of Y. We get that. However, we think this is a somewhat different situation because we have individual lots within the park. And at this point, we are trying our darndest to get that home out of there. We don't dispute what the board did. We don't dispute what, you know, LeAnn said. Our hands are tied because we don't own the home. But we feel like, okay, lesson learned. But at this point, all that's happening is two people who would otherwise be able to have a place to live are being, I don't want to say unfairly penalized, but are being held up because of that condition. So our hope is that you will agree, and our hope is that we can get some relief from that provision that just takes, or takes that condition of approval out, or at least reword it so that we can get approvals, talking off the top of my head there, you know, if we can show that they are in accordance with the town regulations. In other words, somebody can come in, get approval for the home on the lot, even while the other house is still in the process of getting out of there, as long as those other people show that they're in conformity with whatever the town requires. So I've tried to be brief.
No, that's fine. The context matters, for sure.
Yeah, and happy to, I think I've touched the bases, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So are you looking for relief on just the two lots that you have people that are pending to come in?
Well, I would be looking for relief, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, three, I guess. I would be looking for relief from anyone who would be going in in the future so long as the house in violation is still there. I think we have four lots. All right, well, that takes, okay. Well, I guess then it would be those three. But I mean, I'm trying to think if somebody else in town, or excuse me, somebody else in the park had to come before a town board for some reason. I can't really imagine what that would be, but I guess you could take it on a case-by-case basis. My hope is the violation is going to be cured within, now, again, as I said in my letter, if we have to go, we go the non-payment-of-rent route, and we're halfway through it, then we bring suit, I mean, we're still looking at two or three months, quickest.
What's the worst case?
Worst case could be a year and a half because they have a right to appeal to the Supreme Court. I mean, you know, that's, that's, even on a non-payment-of-rent case, even if you win, open and shut, they can appeal at the Supreme Court. Now, honestly, it's unlikely the Supreme Court is going to take that kind of appeal, but they could. Certainly for the rules violation, they could. It would be unlikely. But if they file the appeal, I can tell you, just getting the Supreme Court, and I say this with all due respect, just getting the Supreme Court to say no to that appeal can take two months. I've been there, done that.
Oh, sure.
And that's a quick no. It could be three or four months. So, and if they take the appeal, all bets are off. That's the best I can tell you. Well, best case is June 15. Right, but she's still got to move the house. So best case, I would say three days from now, but again, honestly...
Do you have any official communication with the owner on their intent? As far as is it their intent to move it out as quickly as they can, and they're dragging their feet because they're not in compliance? Or are they just kind of radio silent and you can't?
They, I'll answer. They have, have they communicated with you since my letter? Oh, that's the one she said she's, okay. Well, that was the prior communications. Put it this way, we had some difficult communications, and that's when I sort of stepped in because I wasn't, that's when I got involved, fair to say, and when LeAnn sent the letter out. I sent them a letter in no uncertain terms. I have not heard back from them, which doesn't really surprise me, given what I said in my letter. My letter was fully vetted and approved by the board. I'm choosing my words carefully, but I will believe the house, I'm just being honest with you. I will believe the house is gone when it's gone. Put it that way.
Fair enough.
And in some sense, that buttresses what I'm saying because I'm not taking anything for granted on that, and I'm going to ride herd, and the co-op's going to ride herd until that home's out of there.
I got a question. Do the residents of that particular home have the financial resources to continue to litigate?
I don't know the answer to that question, other than to say, well, I don't know. It's a valid question. Nowadays, you know, when I first started practicing law many, many years ago, yeah, everybody almost always uses a lawyer. Now, a lot of times, quite frankly, for these type of cases, and I should, well, in this type of case, oftentimes, they no longer use attorneys now. They just represent themselves. I should probably tell you, I represent about 20 different co-ops. I do a lot of this type of work. I do a lot of these evictions. And certainly, as I said, 20 years ago, you rarely saw somebody representing themselves. Nowadays, you rarely see an attorney representing a person from a manufactured housing park on a non-payment-of-rent case.
Just for clarification, that's not occupied, okay.
The house is not occupied.
It was never occupied.
Right. So.
Can I just assume that this clause was put in? Because I was not on the CBA at that time, that it was put in as leverage in order to get that out of there?
I don't, you'd have to ask the board.
Yeah, we can answer that question. So that clause was put on there because there was a lot of outstanding questions, and we didn't know how those would be resolved. And so if that, depending on how that got resolved, we wanted to make sure that that variance continued in whatever the outcome of the town's voting decision was. So if the town voted to go a certain way, then that variance that we granted a few months prior to town voting would adhere to what the town wanted.
Then I guess, just to follow up, because with the town, if they were to remove that particular section of the variance, would the town have any other recourse if these people proved to be stubborn? That in order to...
Well, the...
No, I'm asking this of the town here in general. Would we have any resources?
Yeah, and also, I just, with regarding the violation, it is common practice not to grant variances if there are violations. It's also common practice not to grant building permits if there are outstanding violations. So if you had a violation and you wanted to build a garage, you know, they're denied because they're a violation. So this, the idea of the violation, if you, when you ask the question whether this was just leverage, yes and no. Yes, it's leverage, but also with standard practice to require no violations in order to get permits and variances, so. And I don't know what leverage we'd have.
Well, I can answer that. I mean, obviously, I don't represent the town. I'm not a municipal attorney per se. But whatever leverage you have against those people regarding that house right now, you will have, even if you remove that clause. The leverage the town has, ultimately, if you serve a cease and desist or a removal letter like this, and the person's still in town and still in the home, the town would have to file suit and get a court order allowing the town, to my understanding, to go in and either move the home or cure the violation, or force the landowner to do it. Here, it's my understanding, she's not, is the person even in the town still?
Never has been in the town.
Yeah, so your town attorney may differ, but I don't think he or she will. Your best bet at this point is to make sure that we ride herd on these people because we are ahead of you in terms of where we stand, in terms of the process, so to speak. We've already started the process, and our process is quicker than your process because we're going to get a hearing in court, whether we do it on a rules violation or a non-payment-of-rent on an expedited basis. If the town has to bring suit, you're looking, and they decide to fight it, you're looking at months, if not much longer. Under the statute, eviction cases get expedited hearings.
Okay, can I ask you a question? This all started because the owner of that violation on the property there didn't consult with the town in Tilton when she moved that mobile home there. So that's how this all started.
Right.
And so wouldn't the liability be on her for not doing that?
Yes. But in terms of the town, do you want to chase her? Spend the attorneys' fees to chase her? Maybe you do, maybe you don't. The liability is clearly on her, well, I guess regardless of whether you look at it from the town's view or the co-op's view, yeah, the liability's on her and the husband. It's a couple, although my understanding is they may no longer be together. I don't know. But, but, you know, you got to still sue, basically sue them to get the court order to do what you want to do. So the liability is still with them. There's no question about it. And I would say that removing that phrase or that sentence doesn't impact her responsibility at all, in my opinion, because the board has already said that house is in violation. All the appeal periods have run. And so you're not affecting your earlier decision at all, in terms of that house.
Yeah, in terms of that house.
Right.
But my concern is, you know, this variance is for five years, and they have to come in and get it renewed if they don't fill the lots. I'm just not getting a good feeling about removing it altogether, but maybe coming up with some sort of a timeframe, or if she has one or two, because it's not just those five lots that may be out of compliance, maybe something back, another unit that's out of compliance. And I'm uncomfortable with taking it out 100%, but I'm comfortable maybe with coming up with an agreement that they can put two or three. I just, it's, I don't like the word leverage, but it's a...
No, I understand.
It's good for the town to have this in there, just in case there is another violation somewhere in the park.
Yeah, I understand. Well...
But I also understand we're having an issue. They're getting this one out of there, the trailer out of there, the mobile home out of there. And they've got, obviously, some people that want to move in, which is good for them, good for the town, good for everyone. But I don't know if we can come up with some sort of a time period, give them so many months, give them two lots, pick the lots, there's five lots there, I believe, including the one that's violating.
There's four, as I understand it.
But there is going to be five when that other, oh, there's only four?
It was four.
Okay.
It was a little bit of backing.
Okay.
It is four.
Yep, and now we're hearing that you might have three people willing to... Do we... Do we have the lot numbers for these? Can we carve out an exception saying except for lots XYZ, assuming that, you know, they don't put that, I mean, they don't put the house on the lot until they get a building permit?
Right, they can't, or they shouldn't, you know.
Well, they can't, they shouldn't do that anyway, but, yeah, right.
I think I'm with you, Brian, and I personally am not against it, like, even if you have your other lot ready. I think that I'm with you on leaving, leaving the qualification there. Maybe with a revisit as, and I don't mean this in a personal sense, I'm sure you know this, just that the lot, the co-op is continuing to do its due diligence, is continuing to work, you know, kind of revisit it as it goes through. And I'm not meaning to put off any ill intent, but if we removed it, and then the park is like, you know what, this is kind of expensive, whatever, just let it sit there. It removes the motivation to continue to keep it, so I'm kind of with you on that. But I also am wholeheartedly understanding that no need sense in holding people that you have sitting in the wings up as this is getting sorted out in the court system. I don't know how you two feel.
I agree.
Well, you could, you could probably just take a vote that says, condition three...
Excluded from lot number...
Yeah, because, you know, condition three does not apply to lots three, two, and, two, three, and five? Two, three, and five.
And four is the one we're...
And LeAnn, just to, for my own clarification, with the passage of the town ordinance that this year's town voting, it kind of removed all of the gray area that kind of led to this to begin with.
With regard to the units coming in now, that they have to be no older than 10 years old.
So we shouldn't necessarily have the kind of the gray soup we ended up in. It's much more clear what the...
There was gray soup, but it also was no permit to put it there, so, which compounded the issue.
Which, it sounds like they're coming up with a plan or that they're going to have in place so in the future, they tell the people that this is what you need to do.
No ticky, no shirty.
And Matt, if I could just, I don't know that I would agree to the terminology of just that that condition does not apply for those lots, but more maybe you are waiving the requirement on lot three, because they have one, you know, and maybe revisit this again. Or I wouldn't say that they don't have, because you're nullifying your condition. I would more like to see you make an exception for one lot.
I almost wondered, should we make an exception for the lot numbers for a period of time? In that if you're, can we do that? I don't know how you guys feel, just so that these two ones fall through? And then, does it make sense?
Well, she said one's ready to go, but the other one isn't. So can we let the one that's ready to go do that one, and then revisit for the others, or?
We can kind of do anything we want. It's kind of, we spelled these out. I'd like to find an answer here that doesn't make them continually...
Right, I was going to say, I mean, if, well, my guess is if you say, that's exactly right. That's my concern, having to come back another two, three times, or another one or two times. But if you say, "I'm fine with what LeAnn suggested," you know, if you want to say something like, you know, create an exception for lots two, three, and five, and just say... Well, but if the exception only lasts for a year? Those three lots? And then if those three aren't filled in a year, then we do have to come back and have this discussion again.
Right, that's the like, the balance I'm trying to find is, you want to give them some freedom to operate and, you know, fill those lots in good faith that they're going to...
That they're working on, working on taking care of the violation ones.
That's fine, too.
I don't know how you...
Pending that they get their building permits.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, not move it there beforehand.
Okay, I don't know. What do you guys, what do you all feel is? So we're kind of working with a wording where we're going to waive the zoning violation requirement for lots. I apologize. What were the vacant lots?
Two, three, and five.
Three and five?
Two, three, and five.
It's two, three, and five.
Right here.
Okay. So...
Wait, and what's on four?
Nothing.
Nothing.
That's right.
Okay, so what are we thinking for a timeframe? How long are we, do we want to waive this for? I don't, I'm out of my wheelhouse on how long it takes to reasonably fill a...
Would you want to go six months?
I mean, they've got, it sounds like they have two in the works, which should be done within six months, I would imagine.
Right.
And your third one? And you don't have your, can't do it by November, it's too late in the year, so.
Is everyone comfortable with six months? I mean, we're going to have to vote on it, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes sense to you, Chuck?
Makes sense to me.
And lots two, three, and five?
Works for the co-op, six months, a waive on those. Okay. So, yeah, we're going to, I'll make a motion that we approve a temporary waiver from case, it's going to be from the case specifically, correct? In specific to the case. Only because I've been saying it, and I wouldn't normally do this, but I'll make a motion that we make a six-month temporary waiver from condition number three of zoning board case ZB 23-03.
Four lots.
Four lots, two, three, and five. I didn't already say that? For a period of six months. I thought I said that already. Do I need to say that all aloud again?
That'd be September.
She'll get it on the recording, and if she doesn't know that...
Yeah, November, November. Yep, two, three, and five.
Okay, I'm going to try this again. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve a six-month waiver for condition three of zoning board case 23-03 for lots two, three, and five.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
No.
Ready to vote?
Yep.
Those are in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and it passes.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah.
All right. And we just have to approve, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Approve the minutes from April 18.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 18.
They've been made.
I'll second it. Brian?
Goodbye, Brian. Any discussion on the minutes?
No.
Popping up?
Nope.
Those in favor of approving the minutes? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Any other business anyone has? Kind of a nicer ride. I get to come the back way. Okay.
Did hear a little bit about that last night. Yeah. We have the Conservation Commission meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. Those in favor of adjourning the meeting? Bade and seconded. Those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye. Anyone opposed?